...our last item today, the Marina Corridor Specific Plan Workshop. So with that, we'll start with staff.
I'll just go ahead and get started. Tate Galloway, Program Manager with the Planning Department. As we've promised previously, we want to bring to you our various plans that we're working on. In this case, it's a specific plan. We're also going to be bringing community plans to you as a workshop. So give the planning commission input before we have a draft document and obviously before we come to a hearing. So we're very excited to be bringing this to you. With the Midcoast Trolley Extension, this gave us an opportunity to look at land uses along the future Midcoast Trolley Stations, as well as we're also looking at existing ones such as in the Old Town and Pacific Highway areas, which we'll be bringing to you later on this year with those plans. But going back to this plan, we certainly have the opportunity of getting grant funding to look at the planning opportunities and especially in cases where we don't have the funding necessarily to update a plan. So we are looking in those cases to use grant funds to do a specific plan. We did get the opportunity to start the Clermont Plan after we already started the specific plan for the Marina Corridor. So that's not unlike other instances where we've started two master plans in Encanto and southeastern San Diego and then received funding to do plan updates there. And we successfully incorporated the planning efforts from those two smaller master plan areas into the larger community plan area. So just to give you a little bit of background, and with that, I'll have Michael go ahead and give the presentation.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Michael Prince, Senior Planner with the Planning Department. And today, I will be presenting on concepts and components of the Marina Corridor Specific Plan. I'll be covering the background of the specific plan process, the mobility concepts that we're considering through the process, and land use options as part of the plan. Previously, staff received a Caltrans-funded grant study to identify land use and mobility improvements for the specific plan area. The key recommendations from the study were increasing densities around the three trolley stations and creating a modified grid network within Linda Vista. The specific plan process builds upon and refines the study recommendations, and that is funded through a Sandag Smart Growth and incentive program grant. We have had extensive community engagement throughout the process, including the formation of two subcommittees of the Clermont Mesa and Linda Vista Community Planning Groups. We've held dozens of meetings with the subcommittees, as well as pop-up outreach events, presentations to town councils, and business associations as well. Through these meetings, the communities have confirmed their visions and developed two sets of guiding principles that were used as criteria in the specific plan. These include protecting and enhancing the Marina Corridor's unique neighborhood character, establish a varied and balanced mix of uses, retain current height limits, provide a range of housing options, improve walkability in the community and mobility for all modes, maximize sustainable development, and retain employment uses. The specific plan area is roughly 300 acres, and it covers the areas around the existing Marina Trolley Station, as well as the under-construction Teckalodee Trolley Station and Clermont Drive Trolley Stations. The 300-acre area is bounded on the north by Gessner, just north of Clermont Drive, and Friars Road on the south, I-5 on the west, and Marina Boulevard in the commercial properties on the east within Linda Vista. Moving on to the mobility topics, the proposed mobility network would establish a modified street grid in Linda Vista and reclassify Marina Boulevard to enhance pedestrian and bike facilities within Clermont and Linda Vista. One note, the attachment showing the street network in the report incorrectly identifies West Marina Boulevard as a two-lane collector that is being considered as a four-lane facility. Similarly, Marina between Marina Boulevard and Clermont and Teckalodee Road would be identified as a two-lane collector through the specific plan process. The existing Marina Boulevard configuration within Clermont is a roughly 1.5-mile stretch that is currently a four-lane roadway in the community plan. As of today, it operates as a three-lane roadway. Sandag is in the process of constructing the trolley line along Marina Boulevard, and it has utilized one of the southbound lanes for construction purposes. Through the specific plan process and the community engagement process, we have recommended reclassifying Marina Boulevard to a three-lane collector. We would repurpose the existing right-of-way to create a two-way cycle track on the west side of Marina Boulevard and allow for an enhanced sidewalk consistent with the community vision of a boardwalk on the east side, primarily located within Bay Park. This is a conceptual illustration of Marina Boulevard within the Clermont area. The building footprints shown on this are there to provide context, and the painting of the bus bay and the cycle track are for illustrative purposes, showing the three-lane facility, as well as pop-outs and intersection improvements that could be included through the implementation of the specific plan recommendation. This is a conceptual illustration of the Marina Boulevard at Clermont Trolley Station, showing the recommended cycle track, as well as the three-lane roadway, as it sits next to the Clermont Drive Trolley Station. Moving down into the Linda Vista mobility improvements, the recommendation is to, again, establish a modified grid network through the extension of Marina Boulevard eastward to connect to Linda Vista Road, as well as Sherman Street moving northbound to connect to Marina Boulevard to create that modified grid, as well as the removal of existing rights-of-way from the roadway network to maintain that grid. Here's the current roadway configuration, which shows the existing transition between Marina and West Marina Boulevard, as well as the Linda Vista Road, Napa Street, and Marina Boulevard triangle. Currently, there is congestion issues associated with the existing roadway and difficulties for both pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists in navigating the area. The proposed roadway configuration would establish a modified grid through the extension of Marina Boulevard eastward to connect to Linda Vista Road, as shown on the right side of the screen, the extension of Sherman Street northward to connect West Marina to Marina Boulevard, and the removal of a Napa segment from the roadway network between Marina Boulevard and Linda Vista, as well as the removal of the transition between Marina and West Marina Boulevard to allow for a team of the intersection with Cushman Avenue and West Marina Boulevard and Marina Boulevard. This clearly establishes the grid, helps improve connectivity for all modes of travel, pedestrians, bicyclists, and relieves congestion for motor vehicles. Moving on to the land use options, within Clermont, as Tate had previously mentioned, the recommendation is to maintain the adopted land uses through the specific plan. The land uses will be addressed comprehensively through the community plan update, which is currently underway. Within Linda Vista, the recommendation is to focus increased density around the trolley stations and where the mobility improvements would be implemented, to maintain the industrial land uses, and establish a transition between higher-density residential and nearby single-family neighborhoods. The creation of an artisan district would promote small manufacturing and goods production that supports local businesses within the area, and it would maintain the general commercial land use designation for the area, which allows for mixed-use development with up to 29 dwelling units per acre. The employment district would promote small manufacturing and goods production that supports local businesses, and would maintain the industrial and commercial land use designations for the district and be consistent with the subregional employment area identified within the general plan. The Marina Station District is a 40-acre area adjacent to the Linda Vista Trolley Station and the University of San Diego. The area represents an opportunity for mixed-use development up to 73 dwelling units per acre and the completion of the grid network through the extension of Marina Boulevard and Sherman Street. Within the Marina Station District, the areas that are recommended for change are shown in purple on this map. They include the community village land use designation, which would allow for up to 73 dwelling units per acre, and approximately three acres of land currently designated for general commercial along Gaines Street between the San Diego Humane Society and the Police Department's Western Division, and that would allow for up to 54 dwelling units per acre. Other uses within the district that are proposed to remain would be the San Diego Humane Society, the SDG and E substation, the Police Department's Western Division, and the Village at Marina Vista. The plan would recommend retaining the adopted land use designations through the specific plan process for these areas. This is a view of Linda Vista looking north with Marina and West Marina Boulevard transition located at the center of the screen, and at the bottom of the screen, you can see the connection to Sherman Street and Napa Street. This is a conceptual illustration of the Marina District view looking north. As you can see, there's a potential development opportunity along the extension of Sherman Street and the extension of Marina Boulevard with the ability to include plaza space. This is a conceptual illustration of how development could be cited within the area with the extension of the new roadways. This is, again, another conceptual illustration of the Marina Station District, showing the building frontage as it relates to the street, as well as the potential to incorporate public plaza space within the plan area. Within the Teckalodee Station District, the 20-acre area is anchored by the Teckalodee Trolley Station. This area represents an opportunity for village development with walkable block patterns and view corridors identified through the site, as well as the ability to provide public parks and plazas. The Teckalodee Station District would be identified as a community village land use designation, and there are two options for residential density currently being considered through the specific plan process. One would allow for up to 109 dwelling units per acre on the site. The other option would allow for up to 73 dwelling units per acre on the site. The implementation of the Teckalodee and Marina districts would be implemented through citywide zoning, as well as supplemental development regulations, which would address building heights, building entrances, and setbacks as well. The building height limit within Linda Vista would identify a discretionary review process for any project that exceeds 45-foot height limit within the Teckalodee Station and the Marina Station districts. The next steps in the specific plan process are to take your input today, as well as that of the community, finalize the public review draft, or excuse me, finalize the draft to submit for a public review in May, go through the community engagement process and review of the specific plan draft, as well as the environmental impact report process, with the anticipated date of the public review draft for the EIR being released in December of 2017, and then moving forward through the public hearing process between March and May of 2018. And that concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Tate, did you have something?
Yeah, and I just wanted to reemphasize what Michael said. I think what we really liked today is to hear your comments specifically on the land uses, density, and anything related to the proposed mobility network. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no questions for staff, then we'll go to the public testimony. We'll start with Matt Adams, and then Jeff Holbrook. Hello, Matt.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners. Welcome, Commissioner Granowitz. Nice to see you up here. Matthew Adams, representing the Building Industry Association. Just wanted to give some initial thoughts as this exercise unfolds. I certainly recognize that we are in the midst of a process that has a ways to go, but this kind of dialogue and input is critical to create a plan that is successful, both in public appreciation and establishing and creating the vision by which the city wishes to have. And when you're making and considering these proposals, keep in mind where we're at in terms of housing production, not only in San Diego, but in California. But primarily here in San Diego County, the numbers that have come out thus far for this year are less than encouraging. For all of the discussion and commitment to produce more housing in our region, we have been woefully underproducing. The first two months of this year, we've had only 651 permits pulled in the entire county. That puts us on pace to produce less than 4,000 total units this calendar year, which would be a 60% drop of what was produced last year, which was one of the first years where we actually exceeded the 10,000-unit level, first time in many, many years. It's a very real problem that we're experiencing. It's a housing shortage, which has also resulted in rising costs, which are driving our young people out of the region, and we're not providing for middle-class housing. You know, the mayor has a firm commitment to this. The Smart Growth and Land Use Committee has a major commitment to trying to improve the process, maximize the efficiency of the process, so we can start producing the units that are sorely needed here. It was referenced just in the previous item, that there were multiple deviations, and that it's such a great project, but more than one of you said it just took a long time to get here. That's got to be the key. You got to knock off the time it takes to take a project from concept to construction, and that occurs by making sure that your development regulations, your height setbacks, step backs, and the like, are allowing you to achieve the vision that you're trying to establish. And it's going to be a tricky thing. We see it with all community plan updates. But you have transportation corridors here where you should maximize the density potential to achieve the goals, and establish development regulations so you don't have to have an hour and 20-minute discussion on deviations. You have projects that are fulfilling the vision through the regulations that were established in the first place. That's where we're really going to see our success. And the final barometer will be, are we producing the units? And thus far this year, we're not. So please bear that in mind as we move forward with this process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt. Jeff Holbrook, and then Perry Deely. Is Jeff here? Looks like we left him. Okay, Perry, you're next then.
Mr. Commissioners, all of Commissioners, the Chairman. I'm very excited to be here today because this is one of those very great opportunities for San Diego to take a leadership role in terms of addressing the infill. We have a 20-acre parcel that we are calling the Teckalodee Marina Village, and this is unusual to be able to get property owners coming together at this early stages to work through a planning stage. We are not proposing a specific development. What we're trying to do, working through this public process, is show the benefits of having the kind of density that would give the housing for Linda Vista, housing that could also support University of San Diego, and housing that's going to be on the corridor that can also benefit UCSD and downtown San Diego. This particular transit location, Teckalodee specifically, I think is going to be very unique in terms of our future growth. If we can get the type of density that's being proposed and advocated, we can create the kinds of neighborhood amenities that currently do not exist in Linda Vista. We've had Gensler architects come up with some conceptualized diagrams and looking at other big, larger transit projects in Southern California, and you could create open plazas, public parks, the kind of retail amenities that the neighborhood currently doesn't have. We would put in drugstores and grocery stores and outdoor dining and neighborhood, you know, public benefits. So we could have concerts in this location. We could have other public benefits by having the density. Coverage, of course, is the key when it looks to density. We would have less coverage and go more vertical on the density to create these amenities. So as we're working through the process, we fortunately have had quite a few, you know, of the owners that have established a commitment, working together, that if we can get this zoning approved, then I think we continue to work with the community, continue to work with the neighborhood, to create a project that would benefit the entire area of Linda Vista, including USD. So we encourage what the process is going forward. We think this is a unique opportunity. It conforms to what I think your goals and objectives are as a planning commission, to find quality residential locations in a mixed-use, transit-oriented design project. Here's a classic example. So as we continue to go through this process, we hope that we're able to be successful to get the kinds of density that would allow this transformation on 20 acres of property that would, you know, be a big plus for the region and a big plus for the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Perry. Sophie Wolfrem, and then Micah Perlin.
Good morning. My name is Sophie Wolfrem, and I'm a policy advocate with Climate Action Campaign. We support the intent of this plan to build density infill near transit and make mobility improvements that would enhance safety and access for pedestrians, bikers, and users of mass transit. The city's climate action plan commits to cutting half of our greenhouse gas emissions by 2035, which will be no small feat. We will achieve it in part through increasing the use of mass transit in transit priority areas to 25% by 2035, biking commuter mode share to 18% by that same year, and pedestrian commuter mode share to 7% by 2035. One of the most effective ways to increase bicycle mode share is to build bike infrastructure that makes the interested-but-concerned class of cyclists feel safer on the road. The proposed cycle track connecting Clermont and Linda Vista is a perfect example of the type of project we need more of in San Diego to fully implement the climate action plan and reach our commuter mode share goals. As for transit, the citing of dense development near existing and future stations will help make traveling by public transit a viable and attractive option for commuters. In addition, one of the strategies of the climate action plan is to promote effective land use to reduce vehicle miles traveled, specifically by implementing the City of Alt Village's strategy to reduce the average vehicle commute distance by two miles by 2035. The community villages proposed in this plan exemplify the linked transportation and land use planning necessary to reduce vehicle miles traveled, and not to mention improving quality of life and public health by promoting active transportation and developing mixed-use neighborhoods that locate amenities close to home. So all that to say, we're fully supportive of this effort to promote dense transit-oriented development and implement the city's climate action plan. We look forward to many more similar plans in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophie. Micah Perlin, and then Rachel Lang.
Good morning. My name is Micah Perlin. This is my first time speaking to you, so thank you for the opportunity. I'm born and raised in San Diego. I remember when you could drive anywhere in San Diego in 15 minutes. It didn't matter what time of day. We obviously don't live in that reality anymore. I left for college, came back, there were stop signs and there were stoplights. Embracing the new reality, and as somebody who cares deeply about the environment, wants us to take concrete actions towards the climate action plan, and also somebody who cares deeply about there being affordable housing for middle-class people, we have to support density in San Diego. I have a young family, trying to decide what part of town we want to live in, navigating the traffic, navigating options. These kinds of developments are the kinds of developments that young families want in San Diego. We want to be able to have two working professionals that can get to work on public transportation. We want to be able to walk to a cafe. We want to be able to walk to a supermarket. I lived in Spain. I experienced what it's like to be in a community where life is in the street. It's fantastic what was described here, bringing community together and open space in your neighborhood with plazas. This vision is fantastic, and I'm here to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Rachel Lang.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak, Commissioners. I grew up here in San Diego and have two children born here, Sharp Mary Birch. I have a tremendous stake in this city's future and just want to speak and say that I wholly support the concept of dense housing along the Midcoast Trolley Line. For the most part, the objections that you're going to hear are fear of change to our city, and I too remember what it was like when this was a sleepy Navy town. But unfortunately, we're not going to be able to stave off growth by making it more expensive and difficult to find housing here, because frankly, the people that we're leaving out in the cold are our children. There's this notion that there are all these people moving here from Nebraska and Philadelphia to enjoy our sunny weather and our great lifestyle, but in reality, it's babies being born here, and it's our older folks living longer. So with that in mind, shrinking our population or stagnating it is somewhat less appealing. So we've got to accommodate our grandparents and our grandkids, and the only reasonable and responsible way to do that is making more efficient use of land for transportation and housing. So I also think that we need to rethink or not listen to the folks who say, "Nobody's going to use transit." It's a self-fulfilling prophecy that transit is inconvenient, and if we continue to give into the resistance, it actually does make transit inconvenient. If residents can walk out the door, catch a train to downtown Sorrento Valley, our major universities will start to see that shift. So embracing plans like this will get us there, and thank you for your time. Thanks.
Thank you, Rachel. And then our next speaker, Howard Wayne. Howard, it looks like you have two other speakers who are receding time. Is that correct? Okay, Mary Lundberg. Mary, thank you. And it looks like Erin Collin?
Colin.
Collin, okay. So you have up to nine minutes.
Good morning, members of... I'm Howard Wayne, and I am the Chair of the Ad-Hoc Committee of the Linda Vista Planning Group for the Marina Specific Plan. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here. I first wanted to thank Michael Prince. Michael advised me the meeting would be occurring, and he has been regularly in attendance at the ad hoc meetings. We have been working with Michael since at least November of 2015, and he's been there all the time. And he encouraged us strongly to develop a vision plan, which we have proceeded to do. And in the vision plan, we emphasized, among other things, retain the current height limit. We have the density consistent with existing neighborhoods, and three, that there be no worsening of traffic. The position of the ad hoc committee has always been one of density with dignity. We believe greater density in the neighborhood is desirable, that developments would be improved, and we recognize the housing shortage that is going on in San Diego. We want to play our fair share with resolving it, but only our fair share, and not that all the housing be placed along this area. So with this in mind, the committee met again in December of 2016 and took up the issue of whether the height limit, which in the area right now is 30 feet by right, 45-foot by discretion, the vote was to ask whether the height limit should be our top priority, and the ad hoc committee voted that it should be. I then asked for a straw vote of the people in the audience on their feeling on the motion. And overwhelmingly, they voted in support of making the height limit our top priority. And in fact, most of the negative votes came from those looking to monetize the upzoning of the property, the 20 acres referred to before. Because with the 20 acres, at 73 units to the acre would be about 1,460 acres, and more than 2,000 at the higher number, dwarfing the 350 homes of Overlook Heights, which is the neighborhood community, the neighborhood directly across from where this project would occur. Rather than extensive community engagement being used as the criteria, the community engagement has been ignored. Rather than the reality of community engagement, we have seen the going through the motions of community engagement. Rather than the process of consultation, we've seen basically the checking of boxes to be sure that there is official compliance, but not what the community wants. I'm going to ask that this group, ask the Planning Department to truly engage with the city, to truly engage with the community that is being affected, to listen to their concerns, and to come back here with a proposal that reflects the community's desires, and has been repeatedly expressed by the ad hoc meetings over the past year and a half. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Howard. Those are the speaker slips that I have in favor of today's proposal, or at least the Marina Corridor Specific Plan. I'll go to those opposed. I have one speaker slip, Margaret Schmidt. Margaret? If you would like to address the commission, please fill out a speaker slip. This is the last speaker I have currently.
Good morning. Thank you. I join many members of the community in looking forward to the potential benefits in transportation and amenities that the Midcoast Trolley Extension will hopefully bring. But today, I am here as a member of the Clermont Planning Group Board. Furthermore, I chair the Marina Corridor Specific Plan Ad-Hoc Subcommittee for Clermont. We have had 14 meetings with the community since June of 2015. Through those meetings, it is clear that the community is very activated over concerns of impact views and the blocking of cooling airflow if height limits are altered. of impact to views and the blocking of cooling airflow if height limits are altered, as well as the negative impacts on traffic and other infrastructure if densities are significantly increased. From the earliest meetings, the representatives of the planning department repeatedly stated that there was no intent to change the 30-foot height overlay within Clermont, which provided reassurance to the community. When we were informed in October of 2016 that the land use component for Clermont would no longer be included in the specific plan and would instead be incorporated into the Clermont Community Plan Update, the process of which has only just begun, concern regarding the motives behind this decision resumed. The Clermont Planning Group did formally request of the mayor and our council member, Lori Zap, that the land use component for Clermont be returned to the specific plan in recognition of the community's involvement and effort to date. Regarding the Linda Vista component of the specific plan, I return to my identity as a resident neighbor in stating that I object to the option-one density of 109 units per acre. Such density immediately adjacent to the community at the Teckalote Village site would certainly have negative impacts on the infrastructure of the Clermont community as well, and I urge you to oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. I'm going to close public testimony as I have no more speaker slips, and we will go to the commission. I just want to make an overarching comment. This may be a seminal moment as we start talking about how we're going to integrate our transportation policies and investments with land use. Well, in excess of a billion, if not $2 billion are being spent on the blue line to go up to University City. And that's a huge investment. Most communities don't get investment like that. It's disproportionate, and so that community in some way should benefit from that, but we also understand that with the development of our mass transit systems, that there's going to be some land use changes that go along with that. So I just wanted to put that on the record today. We haven't had this opportunity to have this discussion where we see a very clear example of a new system, of a new component of our light rail system being put in place in the land use plans that will go along with that. So I'll go with Commissioner Hoffman, you're first up.
Well, my first question is, what are we doing today? This is simply a workshop. We're not making any decision, but for our input, correct?
I'll ask staff. I think that's what they were looking for, but if you want to be, if there's more specificity there today. I'm sorry.
The purpose of today is a workshop, so it's an opportunity for you to provide feedback back to staff and listen to the community, as well as the other commissioners, to provide us any issues you think we should be further exploring, or areas that you may support or would like to see any additional modifications to, which could be land use, urban design, or density.
Right. Commissioner Hoffman, I just say for myself, I mean, one of our jobs, I think, that is different than the individual communities, to look at the general plan overall and the general plan policies, and how do specific plans and community plans fit with our overall goals of the City of Villages strategy. So I like to think we're the keeper of the general plan, but maybe that's a little bit optimistic.
Right, and I guess when I, the only reason I was asking is because we see people in opposition or support. It's basically as this plan is presented, but I just wanted everyone to understand that we're not voting on this, so that was the key thing. My comments, you know, first of all, I think this is a terrific direction to go. The land use map makes sense to me. I definitely get the concern of building height, especially probably more so in the Clermont area, but throughout, this is a lot of views there, and I understand that, but that does conflict with the ability to get more housing close to transit. You know, there are limitations based on development standards, and when you limit height, it's going to be difficult to balance getting the type of density you'd like to have close to these two new transit centers. So in fact, one question I had was the transit center on Clermont. I'm looking at the, there's a lot of commercial area designated around that station. It would seem to me, well, the question would be for the Clermont plan, I know Linda Vista, but for Clermont, do the community commercial designation, the general commercial, allow for residential?
Yes, all the commercial designations within Linda Vista and Clermont allow for mixed-use development up to 29 dwelling units per acre.
29 DUs per acre, okay. That's good, because I didn't see a lot of residential there, and at least there's a mixed-use opportunity. One thing I do agree with the first speaker, Matt, from the BIA, is, and the last project was a good example, it really would be nice to build into this plan specific standards that we're not debating. The last one, we had deviations, and there was no limits, and it was a lot of what we felt was desirable. It would be nice to firm that up in this plan, so that would be one comment. As far as the density, you know, I think there's such little information as far as allowing either 109 DUs per acre or 73 DUs per acre that I've seen. I can't make a judgment on that as well, so I don't have really specific input, but I really appreciate the comments of the residents in that area. Where I would like to give input, and this is really more minor, I am a cyclist. This is one of my main routes. Whenever I live up in Carmel Valley, when I ever ride my bike down to either downtown or further, this is a route I take, very treacherous, so I'm really, really pleased to see the new bike trail that would be dedicated bike trail along the street. One suggestion I would have would possibly be to provide mini parks, and when I say park, I mean small, little bench along that route to take advantage of those views. I know cyclists love that when they're stopping. It'd provide a little more open space. But the other input would have to do with signs along this corridor. This is under community character. One thing we have along here is, you know, there are older commercial developments. There's a lot of freestanding signs, and I get that because they're trying to advertise, I think, to the freeway. But I think there's a lot that are very inappropriate, and I don't know if this is in the realm of this specific plan, but for community character, I would sure like to see some addressing of the signs out there, maybe limit some of the rooftop signs, maybe that's already limited and there's a period of amortization, but I would like to see that addressed, and I think that could be such a much more beautiful corridor if we could eliminate, not eliminate, but maybe more decoratively look at those, the signs. There may be some sign program, so that's just a small suggestion. But I really like the direction this is going in. We've got two new transit stops. That's terrific. I think we need to put as many units and the ability for people to get out of their cars, so I'll listen to more comments. Maybe I'll have more as we keep going, but I like the direction it's going.
Thank you. Commissioner Whelan?
Thank you. I realize this is a balance between maintaining the integrity of the single-family neighborhoods in the area and the need to introduce multifamily at a much higher density than is there today. Living in Ocean Beach, I have the same situation, and I'm very concerned that we'll never get another grant like Sandag got for the trolley line if we don't take advantage of what the opportunities present to us. And because of that, I want to just put this out there, that I don't think that development intensity is high enough where it should be around the trolley stations. I did have a question, but Commissioner Austin had to leave. What does a 45-foot height limit translate into in units per acre? You may want to take a stab at that one.
Yeah, it really means the lower the height limit, you can achieve higher densities. There's examples of that, but you end up getting much smaller unit size, so you get more efficient compact units, which could certainly satisfy a certain need in terms of naturally affordable-type units, but it does become, I think, a little bit of financial constraint for developers. So there is a niche, you can do it, but as generally as building heights get a little bit bigger or taller, it allows for the opportunity of greater public space and for a little bit more flexibility in terms of urban design and urban character and building form.
See, that's my main issue, is when, it's like Washington DC where they have the height limit, it's no more than 10 stories. Every single building in Washington DC is a block, because they have to maximize the every square foot that they can build on. So, and I haven't really thought this through all the way, but where I'm thinking for the community is, we should have some sort of a consensus-based baseline where it's essentially a ministerial permit, but that if somebody offers community benefits that are over and above which would be required by the standard set of regulations, and it's a discretionary permit, they should be allowed to do that, because I've never liked the 30-foot height limit west of five. It's reduced the design flexibility to you get these sort of, they look like boxes of cereal, because they fill out the whole lot, because that's what they have to do. And if there was a way, and I think there is a way through a system of incentives and discretionary permitting, to, if somebody's willing to come forward with something that's really good, and it goes through the discretionary process, I don't think the height limit needs to be as big of a deal as it is. And I spoke with you earlier before we started about the idea of, in some way, compensating the people who would be affected by the view blockage who live right at sea level, basically, by upzoning their property, and you said, "Well, lots of people like the way it is as single-family houses, and they wouldn't be attracted by that." I can't think of many other ways to provide at least some inducement or compensation for the acceptance of density, because as a practical matter, we are going to have to accept density along that road. Is it a three-story limit along the areas that are away from the trolley? There's three trolley stations. There's not two, there are three, and each one of those trolley stations should be maximized. We did away with a height limit in Hillcrest in return for benefits. I don't think this area is the same as Hillcrest. I don't think it should be anywhere near as urban as Hillcrest is. I think it's an unusually long corridor to get from Clermont, drive all the way down to, say, the Morena area, which gives you a lot of opportunity for planning. So I'd like staff to think about, does 109 per acre translate with height variations into a better building? Probably. 109 per acre, what was the one we just did? How many units per acre was that, do you remember? On Friars? Roughly, top of head. Who just said 60? I think it's a little more than 60.
It was approximately a five-plus-acre site with 300 units, but two of the acres were set aside with the conservation.
Yeah.
So if you look at it, it's really 100 to the acre.
Yeah. I think that's plenty high for that area, maybe even too high. But I guess the takeaway is, with discretionary permits, allow for, and public benefits that are over and above, I've always felt that if the public knew that the acceptance of density would result in a lot of good things happening that weren't there today and would never be there, it would make things different. I know the area pretty well, actually, and the parking is terrible. I think that needs to be dealt with, and somehow, we've made big, and I don't know if you folks were here earlier, but we said, now that you can unbundle parking, that's a big thing. That will be a major change, because if people have the ability to live cheaper because they have the option of going to a trolley station and not pay for parking, that's a major thing, and I'd like to see more of that. I'd also like to put out on the table that I think the community is underparked. Mission Bay Park does not count. It's too far away, and we get this all the time in Hillcrest, where they say, "Oh, well, Bell Bowl Park's right there." It's not the same kind of park. To my knowledge, there aren't a lot of parks in that area, and there should be. One of the other things, and I think you're dealing with this, is you are allowing for the housing to be over the retail and restaurant establishments that isn't there now.
Yes, that's correct.
That's what I thought. I thought so, but I really think that's another way to optimize the opportunities for shared parking at different times of the day, and you should do that. And I guess the last thing is, I'm glad to see the Climate Action Plan folks here, because you provide an important, we'll call it incentive, to achieve the Climate Action Plan requirements, which are basically density and traffic, transportation, sorry. And with that, I'll stop. Do a nice job.
Thank you, Commissioner Whelan. Commissioner Granowitz?
So much of this reminds me of when we updated the North Park Community Plan, between the millennials and the needs of the millennials and the requirements and views of the baby boomers, the people my age, who really wanted things to stay much the same with the, taking the improvements, but keeping the density and the heights low. And I have some concerns about that. This corridor is a special place, and it's being prepared for the next 30 years, which will outlive most of us, me certainly. And so what we do here is really about the future. So let me start with things that are obvious, that are good. The cycle tracks, I think, are absolutely what we need to do. I had a question about the community character. I'm used to this area, because I shop here, but what is the community character here? How would you describe it? Because I couldn't really, it's commercial, it's, I mean, it's transitional. I couldn't define what community character is, and I think for staff, as you talk about preserving community character, you need to tell us what that community character is. You know what I mean?
Certainly. A couple of comments on that. Within Bay Park, it has a fairly clearly defined character, is sort of a predominantly single-family residential neighborhood with community-oriented retail and restaurants. I know specifically Bocchi's and Lucci's are commented on a lot as being sort of an important promenade and important community assets within Bay Park, and the ability to walk to that from the neighborhood is certainly celebrated. Within the Linda Vista area, obviously, the community of Overlook Heights sees itself similarly to Bay Park, though I don't want to speak for them. And one of the comments particularly made by the Morena Business Association and some of the property owners and businesses within the area is that it's a design district and kind of like an artisan district in the sense that you have local businesses, small neighborhood shops, and manufacturers that prepare goods that are local for the community, thinking businesses like Bird Surf Shed within, on West Morena Boulevard, Skip Fry Surfboards within the area, Coronado Brewing Company on Knoxville Street, Bird Rock Coffee Roasters has their roaster and coffee shop in the area, as well as a number of home design and home goods stores, and then the larger retail stores of Jerome's and Toys R' Us. So it is a design district, and it's a goods-producing district within that area of Linda Vista, and then obviously as well, the character of the University of San Diego and sort of the uses that that institutional use brings into the community.
Okay. I think it's important to start to get on the record in describing those so that it's helpful, because some of that may change as the land use changes, and so we need to be mindful of the fact that community character is meant to change over time, particularly in areas that are not consistent. Like you can take a single-family area, like the area is certainly above Morena, and they're single-family, and they are intact, and they should remain that way. But here, what we're talking about is changing some of the land use designations, and so we need to be mindful, I think, of what those community characters are, and whether we want those to stay, or whether they really need to be reevaluated, and look at as emerging... And look at as emerging districts where something different is going to be happening. So it's just something that came up when we were updating North Park. In the artisan district, pretty much you're talking about light manufacturing. But I know that we want to get people out of their cars. So in a lot of these businesses, can they also have storefronts that would also be available to the neighbors that work in the area? So if you have someone that's making furniture, that there is a storefront in front where people can actually look at the furniture or if there's a baked goods, a place that's making baked goods. I mean, we need to give people reasons to get out of their cars. And you're talking about artisan districts. And I love those ideas. And I heard that there is going to be housing on a top of those units. Did I get that wrong or did I get that right?
There could be housing. It's not prescriptive. It doesn't require housing within the area. It's just that the zoning and the land use designation would allow for housing within the area.
Because I think we need to maximize housing where we can. And if these are, depending on the kind of businesses that are in there, if we can put housing on top, I think it makes sense because that would also help some of these businesses survive. When you look at the area now, a lot of the businesses set back with parking in front. Will that be getting changed so that you have the businesses coming up to the sidewalk and parking through alleys or ways that they are in the back so that you increase the pedestrian viability of those areas? Have you guys thought about that?
Yes. The goal of the specific plan is to promote bringing buildings closer to the street and moving parking to the rear where redevelopment would occur.
Okay. And particularly if you're changing it to a grid pattern, which I really like because I think this area is challenging to get through. I agree with Commissioner Wayland about prescribing the height limits. I think that it does... I think it's problematic. I do think that if there are ways to incentivize communities to accept more with amenities, although there often is resistance to doing that, even if they are really terrific amenities. So I don't know what the balance is between saying, you know, "We have a serious housing problem in this community and we all need to take more." And I'm not sure that they're taking as much as could be in certain areas. I mean, when I go and look at the area around the Moreno Transit stop, I think that could have been higher and denser. I mean, it just... If it was El Cajon Boulevard, we would have wanted more to put it in those locations. And it is a terrific amenity that they're getting with everything that comes with the SANDA grant. And we need to make this area work. And my concern is if we capitulate to people who are afraid of density, that it won't stop and that we need to be brave. North Park was brave, and so I was brave. And I'm hoping that we can be brave as a commission in making recommendations that will actually help us. And the last thing I'll say is, in some of the stuff I've read, and I don't know if this is true or not from the community, but it seems like there's also resistance to affordable housing projects. And the thing I've seen is affordable housing projects can be better than market rate. And so I think we need to figure out where we can put projects that are affordable with a big A or whether we try to make sure that the affordable units go in in place of in lieu fees. But this is an area on a transit corridor that should really be helpful in providing workforce housing for people. And I will stop there.
Thank you. Commissioner... Excuse me, Commissioner Otsuji.
Thank you. I'm pretty much in agreement with many of the comments that the commissioners have made so far. The area that I would like to address is the corridor itself. I think there's a great opportunity here. And one of the reasons is that you do have the space to be very creative in regards to, you know, what happens there from a walkability standpoint and appearance of the storefronts. But that would mean that, you know, you would have to work with MTS and the city and other parties in regards to have a very successful corridor that will be complimenting the community itself and also Mission Bay. It's important that that walkability not just stop on the north end at Claremont Drive, but it continues all the way up to probably the UCSD site itself when it's all said and done. And it's an opportunity to provide an example how this corridor would be able to work and be successful, you know, by being so pedestrian-friendly, providing public spaces and little mini-parks and providing the opportunity for many of the businesses and the residences to enhance, you know, their projects or their sites in itself. So there's a lot of great opportunities here and hopefully, you know, we're going to be able to provide that. In detail, for example, along the corridor itself, you know, you would have either contiguous or non-contiguous sidewalks, tree-lined streets, some of them I think should be double-lined. A good example that I'm very familiar with is Scripps-Paway Parkway. If you ever go down that street, well, it's a parkway. It's how... How you feel in driving that street itself. It's not where you go 55 to 65 miles an hour. You're more relaxed and you're more comfortable. You basically slow down because of the environment that that streetscape, you know, perceives in your mind. And with the changing of colors that we rarely have in San Diego County, that is provided by either the evergreen deciduous trees or the flowering trees. And that's what I see in this opportunity that we have. Also, I think the bicycle routes are very important. So, you know, combining the pedestrians with the bicyclists, you know, you have the opportunity of eliminating a lot of the automobile uses at this point. One of the things that was mentioned was the signage. About a year ago, I visited the city of Toronto. And what they have done to... And I think it's experimentation. They have started to use plant materials for their advertisements. In other words, you know, the design is created by plant materials and it kind of integrates into the background of the existing native plant materials are there. So it's not so obtrusive, you know, when you go down the street and watch this... You know, it's less of an impact, you know, for everybody. And I see this area as being very eclectic... And I think the opportunity is there for many types of situations that occur there. And I think it's important that we don't forget about USD of their impact in this area too, along with everybody else. So I'll leave it at that right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me add my comments. First of all, I want to start with what the staff in the city will be producing. We're talking about a specific plan. And my experience with the specific plan is that it does identify all the development regulations to allow projects to move forward. Is this a full-blown specific plan?
This would be perhaps more similar to the specific plan that we prepared for Santa Ceguero. So we'll have supplemental development regulations that will work in concert with the Land Development Code regulations as opposed to a separate zoning code and zones.
So at the end of the day, though, to go really to Commissioner Wayland's comments, would you be able, through the specific plan, the zoning regulations and the environmental impact report, clear projects to move forward from an environmental standpoint? Or will there be additional environmental analysis required at the end of the day?
It would depend upon the... On what the project submitted, on the submittal. So we do not envision additional environmental if they comply with all of the requirements of the specific plan. Obviously, there could be additional discretionary action if they exceed the building height limit. But otherwise, no, we would anticipate ministerial projects.
I think I understand your point. And what I'm trying to get to is, while there may be additional discretionary processes that are described in the specific plan, that the environmental analysis has been completed for, say, 60-foot-high buildings, for the sake of discussion.
There could be certain areas, as it relates within the Moreno Station District, specifically where additional environmental review may be required because we are identifying the extension of Moreno Boulevard and the extension of Sherman Street. And so those aren't... We have not done specific engineering or very specific alignments at those areas. So additional environmental could be required in that area, but within other areas of the specific plan, you could see a scenario where additional environmental review would not be needed.
I think the key point, though, is we're not in the process right now of preparing environmental. So I think that's something that we would look at.
Okay. My familiarity, again, is when I do specific plans in my other life, I'm done. I've completed the environmental analysis. I have analyzed the project that... If you want to call it worst case, call it whatever you want to call it, and that I'm cleared from an environmental standpoint. Now, if I need a deviation or something else that requires a special process, that I understand that. But to the degree that we can, with a specific plan, complete that work so that we don't have to go back through this process again, part of that is to give the community a guarantee that if you do it this way, then there's certainty. There's certainty for the community and what they will see and there's certainty for the private landowners and developers. So I can't recall if we saw the notice of preparation on this. I mean, obviously, things are moving forward. But that would be, I guess, an aspiration that I would put out there, that we go as far as we can with the environmental analysis that goes with the development regulations in this plan. So a couple of things that I'd like to see. First of all, the public amenities, and there's a discussion about parks. I supported the Grantville plan, but I thought the Grantville plan, at the end of the day, might have been a little light on parks. And this is an opportunity to make sure that we get open space. And of course, you know the trade-off. If we can go a little higher, we can get more stuff on the ground. So there's a trade-off there. I think we should be looking at something like that. But certainly, I don't want to end up light when we have an opportunity with some of the areas that are being developed to put those amenities in. Also, I'm interested in... And this may come out somewhere else, but the connection between Marina Boulevard and what's planned there and the Pacific Coast Highway. That's also a major corridor for cyclists. And I didn't quite see exactly how that's going to be connected, but there ought to be a way to connect those two. So let's make sure that we don't miss that. You know, passing ships in the night, so to speak. I'd like to see, to the comment earlier, and Commissioner Austin wasn't here, some sort of study of height and density. What are we going to get at, if it's 50 dwellings per acre at 30 feet or 70 dwellings per acre at 45 feet? Or God help us if it's 100 dwellings an acre at 30 feet because I don't think we're going to get what we really want. So we need to really understand... We can't just throw numbers out about height and density without knowing what the building looks like. So there's some typographies there that if you can get some advice on that so you can help us. Because sometimes I think maybe we get a little naive that we can just put density and height in any sort of mix. And but that's not what the private sector and what the market will deliver. You can't build it, if you will. So let's make sure we understand that really well. I also would like to understand the plan more from a three-dimensional standpoint. And what I mean by that, we see everything in two dimensions. We see land use plans and we see aerial photos and everything else. And I have no idea if the topography, that the homes are up on a hill, like we saw today with the project on Friar's Road, or if everything's flat. It's the Flat Earth. So it does make a difference to me when we talk about height and we talk about existing communities and we start talking about issues of view or whatever else. What's really happening out there? I mean, if it's 60 feet and the community's on a mesa 150 feet above it, I might not be quite as concerned about a 60-foot height limit. Whereas if it's right next door to a single-family residence, obviously, I would be very sensitive to that. So I'd like to understand a little bit more about the three-dimensional issue between the single-family neighborhoods that are adjacent in Bay Park and Claremont and to the corridor itself. And lastly, and this may be the more difficult things to do. Clearly, the community has a vision. The people in the community who are participating have a vision for what they want. And I do believe that needs to be articulated in this process. But that might not be what we, as a commission, feel is appropriate when we look at it from the general plan and the policies that are in the general plan for the city overall and what our goals are. I can understand the concerns that a community might think that all the density is going in their community, and that's not fair. But I also think that when we make a major investment to put a light rail line in, that there is an expectation that there is some changes in the land use patterns. That is a huge investment that we have made. This is not build the housing first and the trolley will come later. The trolley's going to be there. And what we decide with this plan is going to be there for 100 years. So I think that's very important that we... Now that we know the trolley will be there, of how we net the land use with that. So those are my comments. It may end up with, we have two options to discuss at some point. I don't know if that's possible or not. I don't know that we can always bring forward a single plan that accomplishes all the goals that we have as a city. We've closed our public testimony. Thank you. But I'm sure there'll be many other opportunities before this is over. And I guess we'll be seeing Claremont soon as well. Is that right?
That's correct. We will be bringing a workshop for the Claremont update. And with our upcoming plan updates, we want to have those more periodically so you can see it at different stages and provide that input early on to help guide us.
That sounds great. Well, thank you very much. I'll go... Yes.
I... Sorry, I put my name up there just to go...
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed you there.
Not a problem. Because I went first and I had the benefit of listening to what everyone else said.
Sure, go ahead.
I just want to say that I agree with a lot that's been said. So my input would kind of go on top of that, especially Commissioner House about the open space versus height. Density around trolleys, very, very important. And I think... I love the comment, "We need to be brave." And we do. And we're looking out for the future. But especially Commissioner Otsuji's... Did I say that right? Otsuji, his comments about the corridor. If you talk about community character and you drive down that street and what you see are things like the Mission Bay Automotive, you see buildings backed up to the street. It's... I mean, my definition of that is... Well, it's not nice. It's not a good character. And there's, we have an opportunity. And his comment about that we have the space, that's what we really need to do. And I think that was an excellent comment. So that's it. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Well, that concludes our meeting for today. We are adjourned. Thank you.